All right, we'll get started with invocation from Councilman Greenwell this morning, followed by a pledge led by Councilman Stone.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings you've given us. We pray that you will provide us with wisdom and understanding and compassion as we go about this morning's Finance Committee looking at the upcoming budget. Please give us insight from your perspective and help us make the right decision. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
... I pledge to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Well, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and there is nothing today under Item 3, Office of the Mayor. And so I will now recess this council meeting and convene as the Finance Committee, a group of people who happens to have the same membership of the City Council. And we have two items, A and B, under this item today, under our committee agenda. And I'll turn it over to the City Manager to lead us as we continue to discuss the proposed fiscal year 2018-2019 budgets.
Thank you. This is our third of our Finance Committee meetings to go over the budget. We've had, this will finalize our 10 budget, our 10 departmental budget presentations this morning. It's anticipated that we'll have the budget on for next week for adoption. We have three departments presenting this morning: utilities, parks, and airports. And we'll start this morning with Chris Browning with utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Coutsen. Good morning. The Utilities Department FY 2019 budget will be found in the budget book beginning on Page C-167. To align with City Council priorities, the Utilities Department developed core business initiatives. We are committed to providing quality customer service and meeting expectations for effective service delivery. We are responsible for providing a safe work environment for employees and the public. Securing and properly managing long-term regional water supply is a high priority. We will continue to upgrade, repair, and replace our systems to enhance the reliability and resiliency of our utility to minimize the likelihood of service disruptions. Aqua and O seat consistently follow strong financial management principles and have obtained the highest available credit ratings for debt issuance. And finally, we are committed to full compliance with the laws and directives of our regulatory agencies. The Aqua and O seat funding sources this year are expected to be approximately $621 million. $321 million for water wastewater and solid waste service charges. Debt construction funds $247 million. Withdrawals from cash reserves $38 million. Other sources, development, system development charges, interest and service fees, about $15 million. This year's fund uses, capital program will be about $384 million. City utility operations, $100 million. Service contracts, $50 million, where Aqua is $17 million with the water, or, excuse me, the wastewater operations contract. O seats $33 million with fleet maintenance, waste management contract, and landfill disposal fees. Our debt services projected to be $49 million. Trust operations, $32 million, where Aqua is $27 million for fee in lieu of franchise and lease payments, billing administrative fees, pavement maintenance for utility cuts, line maintenance supplemental repair, parks mowing services, natural gas and liquid fuels, and the Hefner Water Treatment Plant residual disposal. O seat is $5 million for professional services contracts and fee in lieu of franchise. And then the deposits to reserve for O seat, $4 million, where $2 million goes to cash reserves and $2 million for storm debris reserves. First, we'll start with customer service. So this year, we plan to centralize support staff in property management and easement acquisition and in warehouse management. We plan to improve work management and customer service response time by adding planner-scheduleers so that we can pre-plan maintenance work. And we're planning to add a plumber for our high bill service program. Also this year, we delivered 190,000 recycle carts. So we need to increase our cart delivery and our cart repair staff. So this past year, we added two positions in the overfill, and we would like to make them permanent. And then we need two additional positions for the recycle program. Continuing with customer service, there's a new state law that requires us to disconnect water service for delinquent payments of sewer charges in cities where we provide water service. So we need to add one position there in our customer service group to provide that service.
Coutsen, we have a couple of cities like, well, like Horacres, for example, where we provide all the water, but they provide their own sanitary sewer service. So if nobody, if they don't pay their sewer bill, there's no way for them to do, to force collections. And so state law was passed that if not, they can, they can tell us to cut off the water on a, because they have a delinquent sewer bill.
Who is the author of that legislation?
It may be somebody that dis-horseshoots.
No big deal, just wondering.
We have an LFR goal in our fleet group where we turn around our vehicles that are brought in for routine preventative maintenance within 24 hours. To do that, we would like to outsource specialized repairs for our big back trucks, those types of equipment. We'll, we'll need to add two positions, two mechanics, to enable us to service our vehicles within that 24-hour period. We'll need one administrative position to manage support for functions for the division. And then we'll need to add about $400,000 in parts to make sure that we maintain our fleet properly. And then finally, in customer service, to comply with the city records retention program, we'll need two positions. One, to manage the group, and the other to make sure that we provide timely responses to the open records request. Financial management, the 10-year CIP is projected to be about $2.5 billion. So in order to ensure proper cash flow and manage day-to-day expenses, we've split the financial management group into two sections. First is financial planning, where we'll focus on maintaining cash solvency, budget adherence, and debt service coverage. So we'll need a financial manager to oversee that group. And then secondly, financial operations, where they take care of the day-to-day, and they focus on payroll, purchasing, debt management, and warehouse management. And we'll need one position there to help manage the workload. Regulatory compliance, we have a couple of issues this year. First of all, POSH was developed. POSH is the public version of OSHA. And so, so the state has implemented a POSH program where cities and other governmental organizations must comply. Previously, we weren't, we weren't really under the jurisdiction of OSHA, but we are under the jurisdiction of POSH. And then the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality has some, some rules and regulations where we need to make some modifications so we fully comply. So the big one for POSH and for ODQ is 100% onsite supervisors, full-time supervisors, 100% of the time. So to do that, we need to, we need to reassign the responsibilities of our, kind of our lead people on the crews in line maintenance and in water quality. Right now, they do not have supervisory responsibilities. They are AFSC positions, and we're asking to convert those positions to management positions where they will be supervisors on the job. And then in addition to that, we would like to help with employee retention. Employees will automatically advance upon attainment of license, skills, and experience, and that will be in engineering, water quality, and line maintenance. So those two things will help us better manage the worksite and enable our workers to advance once they get their proper licenses and proper certifications without waiting for somebody to, to move over or, or without having to advertise a position through our normal recruitment process. All of these positions have triggers, primarily in licensing requirements and certification, so it will be easy for us to determine whether or not an employee is skilled and credentialed properly to advance through the ranks. Then in water quality flushing pursuant to DEQ regulations, dead ends need to be flushed every 90 days. That's a dead-end main with a fire hydrant on it, where we have service connections on that main. We have about 7,000 of those in our system, and right now, we only have four, four flushers on our staff. So we need to increase the number of flushers so that we manage that regulatory compliance initiative 100% of the time. So we're going to reassign some of our staff members to do that. And then finally, the Oklahoma Underground Facilities Damage Prevention Act requires us to locate our facilities when somebody is performing underground construction activities. So we're proposing to add two locator positions to ensure compliance. We believe that because of the escalation of our, our city construction projects and other development projects in the city, we'll need two additional people to manage the compliance with that law. So I've just mentioned a number of positions that we'd like to, we'd like to have in this year's budget. But in the budget, we currently have 787 positions approved. And we propose that we do not increase the number of positions. We can do all this work without adding a single position in the Utilities Department. We have a number of positions throughout the year that are vacant. So what we want to do is convert those vacant positions, use the funding for those positions, to pay for the programs and fund the new positions that we're recommending in this year's budget. So with the 2019 budget, we still have 787 positions approved. And that's the first time since 2011 that we have not increased our, our headcount in the Utilities Department. So when you look at this, this slide, you'll see there's a $2.35 million change for salary adjustments, merit increases, those are just the normal adjustments through the year. $230,000 for position modifications and classification improvements. We're getting a credit this year for $960,000 in the city budget, where we're transferring the fuel over to the Aqua budget. That's $1.5 million. We already have fuel budgeted in that, in the Aqua budget. So what we're asking to do this year is put all the fuel in the Aqua budget. A million dollars in city chargebacks and other miscellaneous fees will be reduced this coming year. And that's for city chargebacks, miscellaneous fees, IT, chargeback reduction, parking, position corrections, and PO rollovers. And so the total increase in this year's budget is $600,000 approximately. So that's a 0.5%, 5.58% budget increase in this year's budget with all these improvements that we're requesting. So we go on to water supply and system resiliency and reliability. The FY 2019 capital plan, as I stated earlier, is about $384 million. Some of the highlights, we plan to start the Atoka Pipeline this year. $179 million for that project. We hope to award at least one, maybe two projects before the end of the year. The construction should begin late fall. Heffner Draper Interconnect is on track to where we can connect both of our water plants within the next two years. That's about $8 million. Neighborhood water-
Can you explain that process in a little more detail, the interconnectivity and-
Yes, sir.
-how long that's going to take?
So the plan is to install a pipeline between the Draper Water Treatment Plant and the Heffner Water Treatment Plant. It's a pretty large pipeline. It averages about 42 inches in diameter. And that will enable us to serve the whole city out of either plant. So if we have any kind of a weather situation, or if we lose power, or if we have any other problem that, that causes one plant to go out of service, the other plant can serve the entire city. Right now, we can't do that. Heffner serves a portion of the city, and Draper serves a portion of the city. As we move through time, Draper will serve about 2/3 of the water to, to the city. And so this pipeline will also enable us to do that. The reason we need to move towards Draper serving a larger portion of the city is the North Canadian River has, has an effective yield of only about 50,000 acre feet, which is significantly lower than, than what we've been allocated, our 80,000 acre feet that we've been allocated. And so we need to plan to bring our full water supply up from southeast Oklahoma and provide water to the entire city through those two facilities with about 2/3 of it coming from Draper. The plan is to take Overholser out of service when this interconnect is, is completed. Overholser is fairly antiquated, and it, and it costs a lot of money to operate it. So we're just going to take it out of service and serve the entire city off of the two plants.
Is, I'm sorry, is that line, that interconnect line, is that potable or non-potable?
Yes.
It is potable.
It's treated water, yes, sir.
Thank you.
There was a study several years ago to see whether or not we should just transfer the raw water, and it's more economical to transfer the treated water and, and supply the whole city that way. The Neighborhood Water and Sewer Improvement Program is about $15 million a year, where we replace aging infrastructure. And then the facility improvements are, are planned to be about $92 million this year, and that's upgrading some of the processes within our water plants and our wastewater plants. And then finally, we have a number of interdepartmental cooperation agreements, MOUs, where we need to add system support specialists to the IT department. We currently have four. They, they serve our SCADA system, so, so that we have the right level of security for our SCADA full-time. We have a mowing service agreement with parks. We're going to continue that agreement this year. And then we're working on an MOU with Public Works to take care of all of our utility cuts and roadway maintenance around our reservations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Chris, excuse me if this has gone past us, but where do we stand on that national water test or competition for the city of Oklahoma City?
We have samples and staff heading to the annual conference, the National Conference in June.
Great.
So we should find out how well we compete against the nation.
Okay, good. So, since we are in the Finance Committee, the use of short-term debt by your department is very intriguing and has resulted in substantial savings to your department.
Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering, can that concept be used in other parts of the city's operations? And I see Craig over there, our City Manager. I mean, it's been significant savings.
The theory is, on, we use commercial paper for short-term debt.
Right.
And the commercial paper has, is a very low interest rate, and then we keep continuing to renew. And as long as that interest rate stays down, it's a great plan for us.
Yeah.
Now, if you get upside down on that, then it's, it's not a great plan for us. So there is risk associated with that. Craig, you want to talk a little bit about if we can, if that would be able to broaden that for the, for the city?
There are limitations for us in our ability to use a commercial paper program to, with Geo-Bond, with the, with the Geo-Bond program particularly would be the largest area that we'd look at. Because we use the property tax to repay the bonds, there's limitations on how we can use that property tax. And using it to pay off other debt is not an allowance in that. And so I think there are some flexibilities, that there are some things that you can do. But using a commercial program, a commercial paper program, the way we do with utilities, right now, as we've looked at it, we don't believe it's something that we can do with like the Geo-Bond program.
So that was one of my questions. Is there something statutorily that, that requires us with respect to our Geo-Bond program to issue a bond, and it has a particular length, a life of that bond, say 10, 15, or 20 years? It's statutorily a requirement?
I believe it's statutory limitations that we have on how we use the property tax.
Yeah.
The ways that we can use the property tax. But I need to look into that more and get you an answer on that.
Because it's significant. One of these days, Chris, perhaps you could come back to the City Council and kind of give a rough estimate as to the savings that the water utilities-
It's, what, 300 basis points less?
I'm not sure what their rate is right now, but I would believe it's something in that neighborhood.
About 1.7% for commercial paper.
And your long-term debt's going, your, your long-term's going for-
About 4% now.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other benefit using commercial paper is you don't have to issue, say, the full amount of the bond. Let's say you've got authorization for $100 million, but it's going to take you a couple of years to build a project. You'd hate to go ahead and issue-
That's right. But there is risk involved in that with commercial paper.
Well, I understand.
If you go, you know, that's the reason you have fixed, you know, fixed rates, because then you're guaranteed, when you go into it, you know what your, your monthly payment's going to be toward the end of time. With commercial paper, if it goes the other way, you could, you could be-
And I would say too, that we have not, not using the commercial paper program, but in the, in the Economic Development Program, through the Economic Development Trust, there's been a long term where at different times, we've used lines of credit. And it really has a similar effect, that it's all due at the end of the year. We've been able to renew those. We've, we've now narrowed down and taken a lot more of that out a little bit longer. We went for a very long period of time in the, in the Economic Development Trust, using that line of credit, which again, ends up being a very, very low interest rate because it's such short-term. But you are subject then to changes within the market.
Yeah. So I'm familiar with what happened with interest rates back in the 80s. We entered into a contract to build our first home in 1980, like in January or February. And within the time to build that home, I don't know, seven, eight months, we saw rates go from like, for mortgages, 12 up to 19% and then back down to about 13%. Within, just, you know, so you are subject to wide swings in interest rates when you use short-term debt. And I couldn't explain what's the best approach to doing it, but I'm, I'm just impressed with the results of the water utilities' efforts to utilize short-term debt, so.
Short-term savings, because they still, their principal debt is, is through long-term fixed debt.
Yeah.
That's still their, their majority. So they use the commercial paper to balance that. And so they're still always heavily invested in, in the fixed long-term debt.
Yeah, anyway.
Yes, but you're right. It's, it's been a great program and saved us some money.
Councilman, we have a very complex funding mechanism within the utilities. We also use SRFs through the state, the Water Resources Board, where we can get fairly low-interest loans. And, and it's to our advantage because we don't have to set aside that 10% escrow that we do on the long-term debt. So it saves us a good bit of money. This last year, we, I think we, we were awarded $128 million from the SRF for both drinking water and, and clean water. And so that's significant savings to, to the ratepayers there, because we don't have to set aside that 10% and then pay that interest on it the, the entire term of the loan. And, and then with the commercial paper, to help keep our construction projects going. And, and as you heard, we, we have a lot of money going out every year. And then we convert it over. And that's the one reason why we split our finance group into the two groups. One, one taking care of the, the day-to-day business, and the other group who would focus on the, the debt, the management of the debt. So that's, that's why we've proposed that this year.
I'll just add, you know, you have continued, and your leadership at Aqua, your team there have continued the long tradition we have in, in making sure that we're proactive on water issues. And it's kept us from having to discuss a water crisis in this city probably since that dam at the end of your presentation was built. So I commend you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Speaking of that picture, is that, did we, did we take that photograph ourselves?
This one? No, no, sir. We, we borrowed it.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's a great picture.
It is a great picture.
And I was really impressed with the invitation to the 100-year anniversary of the dam. I mean, it is, that needs to be highlighted.
Some of your lights are out, Chris, just a heads up.
That's an old picture, because we replaced them all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Parks Department, Doug Cooper, who's here this morning.
Good morning. Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. For the record, appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning. As we set up, you'll find our budget on C-109. Our mission statement is to provide parks and recreational and cultural services to the Oklahoma City residents and visitors as they have improved health, so that they will have improved health, wellness, and quality of life. Our vision is to be the premier Parks and Recreation Department in the state of Oklahoma and set the health and wellness and recreational standards in the region. We also try to look at what the national trends are. And the core principles of our national organization, the National Recreation and Park Association, they have conservation, which we think we do a pretty good job of providing conservation for our parklands. We're even helping some of our sister departments, the water utilities and the police department, the fire department, take care of their resources. We're all about social equity. We want to make sure that all of our residents, no matter where, where in the city they live, or what socioeconomic background they have, have equal opportunities to access parks and recreational facilities. But one of the ones that I really want to highlight is the health and wellness. The health and wellness for the NRPA is, is the same pillar that the City Council established for us back in 2014. So, so we're right in line totally with the national trends and, and what the national organization is trying to create across, across the United States. The Oklahoma City Parks Department is made up of administration, recreation, natural resource, and grounds management. We also, at this point in time, have cultural services through the Civic Center. And we'll get into a little bit of that detail as we go forward here in a few minutes. Our Recreation Division is primarily made up of athletics and aquatics and general recreation. We have quite a bit of our LFR and our research going into trying to make sure that we can adhere to the health and wellness pillar that the city has put up. Some of the highlights I'd like to point out is our Family Aquatic Center, Centers. In 2017, we have a bit of a drop at our Family Aquatic Centers. We only served 61,750 folks at our Family Aquatic Centers. I think two things happened in, in that year. One of them was the- One of them was the opening of the family aquatic center and more. Took some of our clients away from us. And of course, that we were at the peak of our economic circumstances. And I think some of our, our folks that, that normally went to our center were holding their, their disposable incomes in check to make sure that they could live on it. We are forecasting that we will be at, back up above our 2016 numbers at 72,400 this year. We think that our facility provides a little bit better quality. Our citizens on the south side of the city at Early Wine are coming back from their experience with more. We're, we're thinking that we're going to be able to recover from that. Our adult league participations has doubled since we re-energized ourselves in providing adult athletics. In 2016, when we started, we only had about 2,400 people participating. Currently, we're at 5,300. So we're, we're liking the trend. We're adding opportunities for our adults to stay engaged and keep our activities going for them from a health and wellness perspective. And one of the things that we're happy to see, in 2016, we fell to 10,000 at our, our two senior centers. We're actually back up to almost 18,000 participants at our two senior centers. And we will be bringing numbers for the two new senior health and wellness. That'll be part of our budget presentation next year. Couple other things that I'd like to highlight from the recreation division is during the teacher walkout, we stepped up and we, we opened our recreation centers up and, and we made sure that we were available for our children to be able to, to have something productive to do, something safe and secure for the parents to be able to participate. We initiated an opportunity with the school district to bring the lunch program out to our centers as well as since most of our kids were on a free breakfast, we were actually able to secure free breakfasts at our rec centers as well for the children that participated in our program. Our, our partner group, our OKC Dodgers stepped up and helped us create an opportunity for our rookie league. Little-known fact, we tried to initiate youth baseball last year and it was a dismal failure. We had nobody sign up. This year, we had over 200 kids sign up in our rookie league. And again, it's through the benefit of having a, a quality organization like the OKC Dodgers here in our great city. And for the first time in the history of the Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department, actually first time in the United States, we have a sanctioned soccer league as part of our organization. We have been, we have been sanctioned by the Oklahoma Soccer Association. So now we're on the same par with, with other organizations in the city. We can actually bid on soccer tournaments for youth. We're not planning on competing with our partner groups. We want to be able to partner with them. I think with the, the, a number of facilities that we now have available to our residents, we can actually bid on larger tournaments, which will make Mike over at the CVB a whole lot happier because he, he's been trying to get soccer tournaments into our city for a long, long time. Our grounds management is our largest organization. We, we are maintaining 160 parks, but we also are maintaining the, the grounds for the water utilities as well to make sure that quality maintenance is done throughout the city. We have partner groups to maintain our medians, the Oklahoma River. We are hazardous response people. We go out into the outer remote areas where the farmlands come close to our streets. We make sure that our traffic control signs are clear so that through traffic and stop traffic can see what they're doing. Our tree inventory and maintenance organization is expanding their opportunities through the, the gift that we got from the community foundation in the tree survey. And our special events continue to provide opportunities for promoters as well as our own programs to come forward. Our proposed budget, and again, I'll get in a little bit more detail, but, but we were successful in getting a donation of $300,000 worth of improvements to our Lightning Creek facility to provide five new soccer fields, improved soccer fields for the south side. That donation is coming in, so in order to make sure that we can maintain it at quality, we are requesting that two people be added to our grounds maintenance organization for athletic fields. And our walking and biking trails, as you know, we opened up the Will Rogers Trail this year. That adding to it, and, and of course, the on-vent of the Stanley Draper Trail coming on, we have requested that in our proposed budget, that two more people be added to our trails maintenance activity so we can keep our 80 miles, our current 80 miles of trail systems clean and free of debris and inspected on a weekly basis. The natural resources organization is the primary group that takes care of our highest tourist attraction, and that's the canal, the Bricktown Canal. We also maintain Martin Park, Will Rogers, and we have the, one of the few city-operated fisheries management organizations in the country in transcending here in Oklahoma City. The natural resources line of business, I think the biggest thing, as much as we get to tourism in the Bricktown, Martin Park is our highest visited park in the organization. We get around 450,000 people visiting Martin Park on, on an annual basis. It's, it's a busy little park. And the programming that our naturalist staff provide out there, the day camps, the week-long camps when school is out of session, gets the kids back engaged with, with the neighborhood. We, for the canal, obviously, it's, it's a high impact and a high visible area. Our proposed budget is, is requesting 1.3 million in capital improvement funding. We need to make sure that we go back in there and keep everything up to standards, the Oklahoma standards. Want to make sure the lights are working, the landscaping is in good shape, irrigation systems, things along those lines. That's part of the natural resources budget request. The, the secondary one is $600,000 capital improvements for Will Rogers Park. Our irrigation system out there at our premier gardens and arboretum is over 50 years old, so we want to make sure we get it rehabbed and, and functioning properly. Again, from a conservation perspective, we want to put water, rain sensors on it, wind sensors on it, so we're not trying to irrigate when Mother Nature has already done that for us and we're not wasting our valuable resources. And probably the single largest increase to the natural resources budget that we have proposed is approximately 1.3 million dollars going to the Scissor Tail Foundation for their startup management of Scissor Tail Park. Our central business office, take a moment, see if anybody recognizes that citizen. Our administration, administrative offices is, is the marketing, the park planning and landscape architecture, staff support for six commissions and trusts. The central business office alone processes about 4,800 rental permits or special event permits through the offices. Our administrative offices applied for and, and have received the $200,000 National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Grant for this year, which will go into our Route 66 Park to help finish out our 100% handicap accessible baseball diamond. We're hoping to be able to attract the physically challenged youth as well as war veterans to play baseball again out there at that park. The whole ball diamond is covered in, poured in place rubber safety surfacing like we're putting in our playgrounds, but the whole ball diamond, outfield, infield is rubberized so a kid in a wheelchair, a kid on crutches can get up to bat and, and be able to run the bases safely. And we hope to be able to attract the veterans groups and, and start a veterans league, baseball league out there at Route 66 Park. The, one of the other things, I think, well, one of the proposed additions that we have in, in this particular section of our budget is a few years ago, we reduced our, our administrative staff. We eliminated our marketing position and a couple other key management positions within our organization to make sure that we kept the recreation staff in place and our grounds maintenance people and staff. But our ability to get the word out about the 1,500 programs that our rec centers put out, our naturalists put out, we want to add a marketing position back into our organization. One of the biggest changes for this year, and it'll be coming to you very shortly, but it's in our proposed budget that we turn over the operations of our largest performing arts venue, the Civic Center Music Hall, over to the Civic Center Foundation for operations. So what that means is we will reduce our workforce by about 27 positions by either they being disseminated into this, into our organization or into other city departments, or they have been offered positions with the Civic Center Foundation so they can stay right with the building, continue to provide the quality customer service that we're known for in that building. The foundation is working with our staff to find, to offer them positions. Some of them have signed up to go to work for the foundation July 1. The contract, the agreement, the amended agreement will be coming before you all here in the next two weeks to make sure that you're in agreement with what we've set out.
One question on that.
Sir?
Page C-111, major budget changes, number six. It talks about the outsourcing of the operations of the Civic Center. It's going to save us about $3 million. Can you go into a little more detail as to how that will save us money and what oversight we will still retain through this agreement?
Excuse me? Yes, sir. Be happy to. The $3 million is what is budgeted primarily for our staff to operate that building currently. The Civic Center Foundation is planning on picking up all of those, those expenses off of their shoulders, not on our taxpayer's shoulders. So, so that's why it's a $3 million reduction. And it, and as in most city departments, its personnel is the highest expense. Obviously, we also have a revenue stream that comes in from those, those efforts. Those revenue streams will be refocused to the foundation so that they can reinvest those opportunities back into the city facility to keep it the quality facility that it is today. So, they will work with our other tenant groups to make sure they stay whole and solvent. The, the agreement sets you as the determining factor for everything that the foundation does at that building. So your oversight and your policy decisions are not going to be set aside. You will still be an intricate player in how that, how that facility is operated.
But there, the building's always had a net city subsidy out of the general fund, and that will continue at the same level. And so that won't be a net savings. But what they were going to be doing is, is running it in a manner to, to hopefully bring in more donations, but also more profitable shows that will come in. And then those dollars will be used primarily for, for improvements at the Civic Center. They've got, they have multiple plans, do things on the roof and change out the concessions and do other improvements over there. And so that, that's the overall goal. An example of that is when they, when they changed the operator for the Broadway Series a couple of years ago and brought more money into the, the, back to the city by doing so.
So would the contract be short-term, long-term?
Long-term.
Again, we wouldn't be able to function as, as well as we have been able to function without community partnerships. And, and this year, our analysis showed that the value is nearly $6 million that, that the partner groups have provided to us. It's 159,000 volunteer hours through 20,000 volunteers. Our volunteers are up 32% this year. Our volunteer hours are up 44% this year. Labor and material costs are down 12% from last year. So, so again, it's making a big difference having these partner groups helping. And again, the big ones are, are the OKC Beautiful and, and people along those lines. The Garden Council has stepped up out at Will Rogers. They're providing more people working in the gardens. They're also offering more opportunities for classes for us to offer at Will Rogers facilities. 60% of our partners this year responded. So we still have 40% that aren't, aren't communicating back with us what they are investing on our behalf for the citizens. But 60% of our partners were able to respond this year, and, and we think that, that's a great opportunity for a lot of improvements that we save on the sales tax side of things. Leading for results, again, we want to make sure that we are adhering to the pillars or the city council's priorities, and that's through health and wellness. And, and we continue to create opportunities for our, our citizens to participate in leisure activities. Some of the leisure trends that we're faced with on a regular basis is the changing in, in our demographics in our community. How do we stay out ahead of, of the changes of ages or ethnicities and things along those lines? How do we make sure that we are on the cutting edge and help economic development provide for those opportunities going forward? We want to make sure that we, we have those assets in place. And some of our strategies in the supplemental section of the budget are on G-81. Other leisure trends that we look at, we, we want, you know, everybody likes to compare themselves with other organizations across the country. I mean, if we hadn't compared, if somebody hadn't compared us and discovered that we were the most obese city in the, in the United States, I don't think we would have taken the efforts to create the, the walking trails and the programs that we have across the city if we hadn't been compared with others. One of the big ones that we look at is, is how we stack up acreage-wise to other organizations across the country. And the national standard is 10.1 acres per thousand. We're at 6.7 acres per thousand. Now, we're going to get a grip on that because the 2017 Geo-Bond, the voters voted for land acquisition and park development. So as soon as we can get started with those opportunities, we can create new parks in three, four, and eight. So we have an opportunity to close that gap through the 2017 Geo-Bond. And, and again, the, the 7.9 full-time equivalents per 10,000, we're at 4.54 per 10,000. Again, we'll be able to get a little bit, close that gap a little bit by creating these, these proposed new opportunities that are in the, the budget going forward. So we, we hope to, to make sure that we are a tier-one city. We want to make sure that our citizens are getting provided tier-one opportunities. Public expectations, our LFRs and things along those lines, we want, one of the big ones is making sure that our residents live within a half-mile of, of our parks. We want to also make sure that we're providing recreational opportunities. We have, we have a pretty good success rate. About 72% of our citizens are participating in parks and rec activities, whether it's on their own or through our programming. Our goal is 80%. So we're, this year, we're anticipating to be at 78% of our citizens participating in something park-related, whether we provide it or they're doing it on their own. Excuse me. Allergies. One of the, again, creating new service areas, you know, we, we want to make sure our city and neighborhoods are more attractive places to live and work and an increased availability of parks, recreation spaces. To that end, this year, we planted 584 new trees. The economic impact of our cultural activities is $54 million. 65% of our citizens live, live within a half-mile. That's our biggest goal. We want to make sure our citizens are living within a half-mile of a park asset. And again, parks program classes offered, we're at 2,300. The 80 miles of trails that we now have with the, the addition of the Will Rogers Trail, that helps us get, get a higher percentage. We're going to have to redo our maps this year to make sure that we're taking in Will Rogers because our trail system is part of the park system and therefore, if people live within a half-mile of the trail system, they're within a half-mile of our parks. So we want to make sure we got, stay on top of those numbers. The proposed budget, again, it lays out pretty cleanly. We don't have that big of a, a change per se. We have a reduction in our authorized positions, but some of the things that I highlighted earlier are having an impact. The largest increase to our operating budget at this point in time is in our natural resources organization. As I pointed out, our subsidy, excuse me, our, our, providing an opportunity to our partner group, the, the Scissor Tail Foundation, to have startup for the Scissor Tail Park. Their, their increase has gone up to a million three. And of course, our, our capital- And of course, our capital improvements that we're asking for, the $1.6 million, takes our budget up to $32 million in essence, the proposed budget. Major changes in the budget, as I pointed out, we're deleting 27 positions from the Civic Center, but we're asking to add five positions back into the organization. So that's a net position change of 22 full-time equivalents. Outsourcing the Civic Center. Some of the add-ins are the capital funding for Bricktown Canal, Will Rogers Garden, and increasing the subsidy for the Scissor Tail Park. We've had quite a year of improvements across the city, starting with Will Rogers Trail. Everybody knows that one. It's the closer in-town connection between Hefner and the river. We already had one out on the West River Trail. You can get to Hefner to Lake Overhoser and then down the West River Trail into downtown. But obviously, the Will Rogers Trail is more of a close-in opportunity, and we think this is a dynamic area, not only for alternative transportation activities, for people that want to ride their bike to work. This gives them a quality opportunity. But we're hitting neighborhoods that don't have walking paths yet, and now they can get out and use this trail as their opportunity to get exercise. So we think, we think this is a great, close-in addition to our trail system. Pat Murphy Park is getting an overhaul. The older kids have had a great opportunity up there north of Lake Hefner to play. We're putting in a tot lot in there so that the two- and three- and four-year-olds, the parents don't have to be quite as controlling, if you will, keep them off the bigger slides and bigger climbing apparatuses. We'll be putting in a smaller scale play system there. Martin Park Visitor Center, again, as I mentioned, it's our heavily visited park. Let's face it, the building wasn't that attractive and welcoming. It was a 1970s vintage building. It looked like a cement block facility. We opened it up. We put the entry doors facing the parking lot so as you're coming down, if you're a first-time visitor and you're trying to figure out where do we go from here, well, we've got a great front door now for them to welcome our visitors to the park. And with the work that our Wilderness Matters partners put in, with the elevated boardwalk that is now adjacent to this, handicapped folks can get up into the canopy, get a more of an aerial view, and they can get up in with the birds that inhabit Martin Park. So we think the new, fresh look of Martin Park is going to be even more attractive. Again, we want to make sure that we are helping the economic impact to the city. The National Parks and Recreation Association, for the first time ever, brought delegates from all over the country to Oklahoma City for an innovation lab, and we were able to take them out on the river with the HMS folks. And then we also were able to take them on the Bricktown Canal with our water taxi partners. Gave them a real experience about what maps has meant from a quality life perspective, but they also got the impact from the business community as well. This is one of those trivial things that I debated on whether we put in or take out, but statewide, these are statewide numbers. The economic activity for statewide parks and recreation is $1.2 billion. We have an impact on the state as a whole. The economic activity generated per person is $312. We think that's a quality number. People are coming in and spending their money here in our state, and a lot of them are coming to Oklahoma City to spend those dollars. We provide almost 9,500 jobs statewide. We are a big employer statewide, parks and recreation. And in salaries, that's $441 million of disposable income that our citizens in the state are participating in. Finally, as I close, I stood before you four years ago. The organization that I came into had two Parks and Rec, certified Parks and Rec professionals. I made it three. Today, we have over a dozen certified Parks and Recreation professionals in the Parks and Rec Department here in the Oklahoma City, and we have one even higher. We have one certified Parks and Rec executive in the organization. So we know, we know how to operate parks and recreation. We know how to make, activate spaces. We know what we're doing design-wise and quality-wise. I'm very proud of the fact that we're, have gone to over a dozen Parks and Rec professionals, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'd just say one thing. Doug has done a great job. His staff has too. When I have HOA meetings, he's always there helping me, and he just plays a big role in making the people in our community feel proud of this city.
Doug, if I may. So I think having a park within a half mile of every resident is very commendable. I think the role of the regional park, though, is just as important, and perhaps in some respects, more important. So let me see if I've got some of these regional parks down. I know Early Wine and South Lakes would be a regional park. Woodson, is that considered a regional?
Yes, sir.
And then Will Rogers is a regional.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not too sure about any other regional parks.
The original Grand Boulevard corridor has the four primary regional parks. You have Will Rogers, Lincoln, Trosper, and then Woodson. That's the, our forefathers saw the need for those. Early Wine and South Lakes are two of the biggest regional parks on the south side of town. North side is Bluff Creek is one of our biggest regional parks on the north side of town, and I'm having a senior moment. But Route 66 is a regional park.
Okay.
Usually, regional parks are 100 acres or more.
Okay. And I think they play an important role in the overall parks department, and they can attract a larger number of people. And if we could use, for example, Woodson as the subject matter for this discussion right now. So when I was in late junior high and all through high school and then a little bit afterwards, it was, you know, we could go swimming there, and we certainly had baseball fields and a lot of outdoor activities, and then a basketball gymnasium that would attract kids from really throughout the city. We used to have some really intense games there, as well as municipal and some of the other gyms in the city. Now, compare Woodson, say, with Early Wine. Early Wine doesn't have a rec center, per se, but it does have a YMCA facility that I think works extremely well. I think people who are members of that Y think of themselves as members of the Early Wine Park group, you know? And they'll spend 20 hours a week there combining the Y and times in the park, which is great, I think. How would you feel if, for example, like we partnered with the YMCA for Woodson Park to add some other facilities beyond the basketball gymnasium, you know, such as exercise equipment and similar type activities? We could either lease the gym to the Y, and they build compatible or related facilities, or we could build them and try to take on a similar role to what the Y does at Early Wine there at Woodson. It's an area that I think really could use some additional facilities for the local residents.
I'd agree with you 100%. One of the items that fell just below the line on the 2017 GEO bond was a complete new facility at Woodson Park. Right now, the gymnasium is separate from our senior center there.
Right.
We're providing those activities for the seniors in that location. We'd be happy to talk to other, we originally talked to the city-county health department about the facility that was going in, that is going in, that's almost completed, Southern Oaks. We talked to them about possibly doing that location at Woodson rather than at Southern Oaks. But the dynamics of the zip codes in that area around Southern Oaks was a higher hotspot than the Woodson area. But we agree with you 100% that that neighborhood could use a new full-service recreation facility there.
I'd extend it to and ask for a partnership with the Metropolitan Library Service to where you could bring in reading activities, not just at the senior level, but starting with youth all the way up through high school and into the senior level. You know, they were surprised when they first opened that facility in the shopping center on 59th and South May, and it's just exceeded all of their expectations as far as usage and new membership. I think the same thing would occur if we could get them to partner with us so we could get a three-way partnership, the Y, Metropolitan Library, and our services there at Woodson. And maybe somebody like the Community Foundation would come in and provide us with some of the funding to get all that project going, be successful there, and then take that concept to other parts of the city. Just a thought.
Well, again, we agree with you. And Tim Rogers, the former executive director of the Metropolitan Libraries, he was involved in those conversations, and they were also part of the discussions about creating the opportunity at Woodson Park.
Finally, Scissor Tail will be a regional park in a sense, right?
In a sense, it doesn't quite meet the threshold of acreage-wise, but yes, the assets and the amenities and the activities would qualify for as a regional park.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. Next up is airports. Mark Cranenberg is here this morning.
Good morning. Mark Cranenberg, airport's director. You'll find the airports budget on page C-3 in your budget book. I want to remind you of the mission of the airports department is to provide for the management, the operations, and maintenance and development of the city's municipal airports to our tenants, users, and the general public so that they can have a safe and efficient transportation system. Before I get started with the budget presentation this morning, I do have a short video I'd like to show you of a typical day at Will Rogers World Airport and also highlight some of the activity over this past year. Very good. I want to credit Josh Ryan on my staff, who put that video together in-house. He used steel cameras and desktop applications and completely edited it, and he did an absolute fantastic job. Before I get into the departmental issues and our performance indicators, I do want to give you a brief overview of the airport trust budget. Looking at our total airport charges to our tenants and users of $61,547,000, these are the major categories of those funds received. Building rents is comprised of rentals for the terminal building as well as other buildings and hangars that the airport trust owns. We have landing fees, which is charged to our passengers and freight carriers, and this is at a calculated rate per 1,000 pounds of landed weight. We also have parking revenues derived from our public parking operation, and this is, we have 7,200-plus parking spaces in our garages and our surface lots. Concession revenues are derived from our food and beverage and retail and rental car commission revenues. And then we have fuel sales, which is a price per gallon that we charge for any fuel that is either retailed on the airport or through those leases that have self-fueling privileges. We have the customer facility charges, which is related to the user fee that pays for the debt service for the rental car center, also pays for the operations and maintenance of the building and the buses. And then a lot of other airport charges that are maintenance reimbursement, apron fees, and ground rentals, which are associated with lease components and leases. We also have other revenue sources as well. Looking at 18,000, excuse me, $18,106,000, we have some oil and gas revenues that still we receive periodically. We use this for our matching grants, for our federal grants. We have interest that we receive from a money market account. Passenger facility charges, which is the user fee that supports our capital program. And then each year, we get a variety of federal and state participation, primarily from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission for eligible projects for equipment for maintaining our airfield. We also are anticipating $30,182,000 of carryover. This is mainly funds from our project fund and also includes the Mike Monrooney Aeronautical escrow account, and then $22,224,000 in revenue bond proceeds, and these are intended to be used on construction this next year. So total sources of funds, $132,59,000. And I want to point out also that the airport trust does not receive any general fund support. The airport trust is an enterprise fund and is self-sufficient on its own rates, fees, and charges. When you look at the uses of the funds, we have operating expenditures, $13,796,000. This is where our major contracts come from with our parking management contract, our janitorial, aircraft rescue and firefighting contract, and our security contract. We have also commodities, which is various services and supplies. Debt service requirements, this is from prior financing of projects such as the last terminal expansion that was completed in 2006, and most recent parking garage that was constructed in the rental car center. And then we have the department operating account of $18,885,000, or total operating expenditures, $45,435,000. We are anticipating reserves of $2,810,000. These are funds estimated to receive in 2019 to be used on future capital, and a significant capital outlay this next year planned at $83,814,000 that balances the budget. I want to bring your attention to a few of the projects that we've completed that highlight our strategy to improve infrastructure and the environment for the traveling public. We completed recently the parking revenue and control system. This is a new system that replaced the outdated and old system that we had. We replaced all of the infrastructure. This is all network-based connected to our facilities, parking garages, and surface lots, and it also pays for certain amenities such as pay-on-foot kiosks, space-by-space counts in Garage B, and it also renovated the Toll Plaza. We also completed an apron project. The apron is quite large. We had one section we needed to repair. This is at the intersection of Taxiway K. And we also completed the Taxiway G extension. Taxiway G is a taxiway that is the longest east-west taxiway that is at Will Rogers World Airport, and if you look on the map, you can see that we extended this 1,500 feet. This is significant because it now extends into Lariot Landing, and that makes about 160 acres available for aeronautical development that we did not have before. We also completed some Wiley Post projects. One of them is the Airfield Improvements Phase III project. This is, we did some renovations to a couple of major taxiways on Taxiway Alpha. We did some pavement reconstruction, repaired some airfield lights and signs, and also did lights and signage on Taxiway B. And then... And then Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center is a major line of business for us, and we completed over $14,700,000 in projects. As the landlord for Mike Monrooney for the Airport Trust-owned buildings, which there are over 30, we maintain the exterior structure, roofs, pavements, mechanical systems inside many of these buildings, as well as various other infrastructure. So now I'd like to discuss our department issues and some of our performance indicators. Our first issue relates to factors that impact resources for funding operations and capital. The nature of the airline industry can be very volatile, and its activity can be fluctuating, and the number of operations and passengers at the airport can affect various revenue categories such as our parking concessions and even our passenger facility charges. So our strategy is to increase and stabilize airport revenue. One of the measures for this is the tracking of our food, beverage, and retail revenue to maintain a growth of at least 2% a year. And you can see in the last few years, we've had quite a few fluctuations. In fiscal year '13 and '14, actually, that was the last time we had a calendar-year record of passenger boarding deployments at 1.9 million. In FY '14 and '15, you can see that we were below our 2% target, and this is because the lounge that was in the security area was closed, and then you can see it rebounded the very next year with the opening of Cross Greens Brewery, which has been a very big success. In the last two years, we've met our target flat at 2%. Another strategic measure is to maintain our parking revenue per transaction growth at 2% a year. This, again, you see fluctuations over the past year. In FY '13 and '15, we had a little bit of an increase over our 2% target, and this was mainly because we kept a lot of the displaced parkers that had been hurt by the off-airport location of the airport that had some heavy damage from the tornado that was the preceding year. In FY '14 and '15, we had a lot of maintenance in our garage, so we went down a little bit. In FY '15 and '16, our implements were basically flat. And then in FY '16, '17, you see our rate increase, and that's the reason for that big jump, and this last year, we were basically flat. Our second issue relates to factors that we have to react to effectively. If we don't, they could impact airport staffing, workload, funding requirements, and long-term planning. So there can be fluctuations other than the airline industry and the aviation industry. General aviation also gets hit quite hard sometimes with that. So goes the economy. So goes general aviation. And we can also be subjected to safety, security, and environmental requirements, which often result in unfunded mandates that the airport has to address. So our strategy is to improve the airport environment for our travelers and tenants through long-term planning and infrastructure improvements, and we'll talk about a couple of those projects in a minute. I want to talk about a couple of lines of business, or in the commercial line of business, a couple of measures that we have. One is the percentage of certification work orders that we complete within three business days of identifying a deficiency. So what's a certification work order? Every year, the Federal Aviation Administration inspects commercial service airports such as Will Rogers', and there are dozens and dozens of areas that we get inspected on. This is primarily for the airfield. And we have to pass that inspection in order for airlines to continue to fly into Will Rogers'. So we typically always do very, very good, and we did great this last year. We also track the percentage of days with sterile security incidents. There are over 3,300 people that we badge at the airport so they can do their job at Will Rogers World Airport. In the general aviation line of business, I want to mention the percentage of itinerant takeoffs and landings from Wiley Post Airport. With an actual of 70% and a target of 74%, I'm really struck. I've managed a lot of general aviation airports in my career, and to have this much itinerant traffic, itinerant meaning a landing and takeoff from an aircraft that is not based at the airport, that means a lot of commerce is happening in the city, in my opinion, and this has been historically high at Wiley Post Airport. We also track the percentage of days that the airport has a runway closed. This is a barometer for us because we have a lot of construction on our runways from time to time. Wiley Post has had a complete overhaul of the airfield over the last few years and has had both its parallel runways closed for a significant amount of time. Our third issue, and I want to spend a little bit of time on this morning, deals with air service. We've done a really good job attracting air service, and we've done an equally good job of sustaining that air service. Air service can affect the economic development of the city and the region, tourism, and the convention business. And we know that Oklahoma City's population and business activity is just going to result in an increased request and demand for air service, and we want to continue to attract as good a air service as we can. So when we look at our in-plane passengers, we try to meet a target of 2% a year. That's pretty assertive. When you look at our comprehensive annual financial report over each year, we go back 10 years, and our historical growth is 1.6%. And you can see over the last few years, it's been fairly stable. This year, for FY '18, ending June 30, we're anticipating to be just below 2 million boarding passengers, and for next year, we're anticipating to be above 2 million. Another measure that we use is to keep track of our cost per in-plane passenger to no more than 5% a year. This is a huge measure and comes up every year in our discussions with our airlines. We're regarded and have been historically as a low-cost airport for the airlines to operate out of. When you look at a small hub, median airport like Oklahoma City, you can see that the typical cost per in-plane passenger is now well above $8, and our last one is $6.44. We determine this periodically each year by evaluating that rate through our rates and charges. I mentioned about three weeks ago during the robust economy presentation that people are surprised about our route map, and we have a very good service, especially to the East and West Coast for the last few years. And now we have 29 nonstop destinations, which is as many as we've ever had. We've had a lot of recent accomplishments this last year. Frontier Airlines came back into the market, serving Denver and Orlando, which was a new city for them. American Airlines, April 3, started to Phoenix to compete with Southwest Airlines so our citizens have more choices. Frontier also started nonstop to San Diego, April 9. Austin, flying a smaller aircraft via airlines four times a week. And then next week, American Airlines is starting service to Philadelphia. Again, I mentioned a few weeks ago, this is huge for us because it opens up dozens of connecting opportunities out of Oklahoma City, and there will be two flights in the morning on American, so that works really well for their transatlantic departures in the afternoon. Frontier also recently announced they'll be serving San Antonio nonstop. Southwest will be doing weekly service starting in October to Nashville. So on new airlines, I mentioned Frontier and Via coming into the market, and new enhancements, we also track those as well. So Allegiant is expanding summer service to Destin, Florida, to five times a week. I mentioned also a couple of weeks ago that American Airlines will be upgaging their aircraft, in other words, adding more seats, so we'll have several hundred more seats available this summer than we did last summer. There are several ways that there can be an upgauge or an enhancement to our service other than a new destination or a new carrier, but a carrier can decide to add more flights per day to a destination, or as I said, they can add more seats. We do have ongoing efforts that we have been marketing very heavily. Ronald Reagan Washington National Airport is a priority for us, as well as New York Laguardia, and the Miami-South Florida area is important for us. And this list, our target list, used to be bigger than this. Philadelphia was on it at some times, so it is shrinking, so that's good. And then two new airlines that we are in regular conversations with is Spirit and Jet To remind you, issues that can impact air service, the economy, the recession that we had in the mid-2000s certainly constrained capacity and networks across the country. Operational strategies of airlines such as mergers can also affect air service. The fuel price crisis that we also had in the 2000s, that significantly impacted carriers that were flying 50-seat regional jets. It made them un-economical to fly, and so many of them, many of those routes were canceled. And then finally, real ID, just to remind you that Oklahoma still technically is a noncompliance state with the Department of Homeland Security, and we are currently under an extension that only runs to October 10. Our final issue is the amount of land that we have for development, increasing maintenance demands on vacant facilities, and the growing cost of the 8100 acres at Will Rogers and also the 1,300 acres at Wiley Post and 1,000 acres at Page Airport. We have existing infrastructure that we have to maintain. We want to continue our land development plan and find ways to improve that infrastructure. Not doing so could prevent the Airport Trust from receiving a self-sustaining revenue source for the long term, and also it can prevent the city from the creation of more jobs and increasing the sales tax base. In the construction program, in the property management line of business, one of the measures that we've done really good at the last few years is tracking our project costs with contracts for construction and engineering amendment costs. So we try to not have any more than a 5% increase in those a year, and you can see the last few years, we've done really well in that area. In the maintenance line of business, a couple of measures, percentage of operating hours, where mechanical systems are functioning, we're doing well. We're meeting our target. Just to let you know, these are creature comforts for our tenants and for the passengers, and they affect things such as passenger boarding bridges and our baggage system, which, if it goes out, we certainly hear from everybody about that, and also our mechanical systems, heat and air. We also track the percentage of vehicles and equipment available for use. The airport has over 400 pieces of equipment, everything from a weed eater to a road grader, and some of these are very, very critical, such as our parking shuttles for our parking operation. We have ice and snow equipment that we need to maintain. They have to be ready when we need them. And also, we maintain the airport's aircraft rescue and firefighting equipment and vehicles. I want to show a few projects that show our continued infrastructure improvements. In the last half of this next fiscal year coming up, we will be doing a garage wayfinding project. This is where we will be adding new signage to both of the five-story garages, and at each entrance to the garage, we're going to have a component that will provide real-time updates as to the spaces that are available per level. The airport's terminal upper deck outside the ticketing counter, it is a bridge deck, and it needs to be looked at and repaired and maintained from time to time, and this is the first phase of the upper-level structural repair. Be replacing some of those structural connections that are not part of the expansion joints. We'll be repairing some delaminated areas, installing and applying some polymer coating to improve the wearing surface, and also some protective coating on some of the structural members. So Garage A waterproofing. A year or so ago, I came to you and told you about our premium parking product, and we were underway with an engineering effort to do a joint sealing project on Garage A. This is the two-story where we have the upper-level short-term parking. And I just wanted to show this is what we've been dealing with and struggling with this last year. So what we ended up having to do instead of a joint sealing project was a much more extensive project to prevent the water from protruding through, actually, the expansion joints and the control joints. So it ended up being a bigger fix than what we anticipated. I will tell you that project is out to bid, and bids come in on that project tomorrow. We're hoping that it will be four or five months by the end of this year. We hope it will be open. Also, the terminal expansion, we have finished the design, and we're out for our final construction estimate at this point. To remind you, the goals of the terminal expansion, this is the beginning of an east concourse. We'll be constructing four gates, three that will be leased to the airlines and one airport-operated gate. We'll be also adding concessions, increase public circulation. We'll be adding an eight-lane security checkpoint, which will replace the two checkpoints we have today. Those will be turned into larger meter-grader lobbies. We're almost finished with the maintenance facility that is being built at Wiley Post Airport. This will be new offices and maintenance base for that group. We also have a project at Wiley Post, a small one, but nevertheless significant, $500,000 to continue and almost finish up our airfield improvements at Wiley Post with Taxiway A5 and Taxiway A8. We're also doing a master plan at Wiley Post Airport. This is an FAA requirement. There are several elements to a master plan, and it is absolutely critical to ensure that you still can get funding through the FAA for the future. And then at Mike Monrooney, again, huge line of business for us. You can just see a variety of improvements over this next year that we're planning to In summary, looking at the department operating account, $18,885,000, and this is broken out by the line of business. We do have some budget changes for this next year. We're projecting an increase in insurance, benefits, and salaries, $462,000, a slight increase in city-provided services. We're adding a civil engineer, too, to meet up with the demand. This was actually at the request of Mike Monrooney because of all the HVAC and mechanical system projects that are in the variety of buildings that we're doing now and is planned for the next few years. We're adding a revenue auditor. The airport receives about $80 million a year in revenue from our 400 to 500-plus leases. 50% of all of these leases have self-reporting requirements with revenue and other compliance reporting that they report to the airport staff, and the revenue auditor will help us oversee the compliance with all of that. This position will also help save $45,000 from using a separate consultant each year that really just identifies a couple of specialty areas. And then finally, with regard to the revenue auditor, the Government Accounting Standards Board recently made a huge decision that affects airports. All of our leases now have to be booked as receivables, which means it's a tremendous amount of time and paperwork when you have to book a receivable for the length of time our leases are, some of them five years, some 20, some as long as 40. So it's going to be a very monumental staff or in taking by the staff. We're also adding a systems support specialist, too, position. This is related to the parking and revenue control system that we are bringing in-house. It's all network-connected. Now that that's onboard, also the 500-plus CCTV cameras that we have at the airport, our contractor that was doing the installation and maintenance on that is expiring. We're bringing all of that in-house as well. A unit operations supervisor for Wiley Post Airport, this is for the maintenance section. We've not had one up there. It's badly needed, and this is simply a position that does the same thing that the maintenance sections and similar components do at Will Rogers World Airport. And then finally, at Will Rogers, we're asking for the horticulture worker, too, and two grounds maintenance operators. In the last two years in our Leading for Results program, we're only showing that we're meeting 50% of all the landscaping, irrigation, and mowing that we need to do. We've had two huge areas of impact to us in that department. The 40-acre rental car center has constant maintenance day-to-day, and probably someday we'll probably need more people for that as well. We want that to continue to look good to the public. And then Portland Avenue, which was opened up a year or so ago, now we're maintaining all of that landscaping, mowing, the irrigation, all the way from 54th Street south to 104th Street. And there will be other common areas of maintenance that we'll need to do in Lariat Landing so that we continue to attract development and maintain that area for the public.
I guess that's the one question I had in looking at major budget changes, number six. It said that these positions were to address significant increases in the numbers of acres of land maintained, and so you're talking about the Portland area and then the rental car facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's all I have for you this morning. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Mark.
That's all we have this morning. Again, we're anticipating bringing the final budget in for approval next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Any other comments from counsel in regards to the finance committee work today? Okay, we have item -- oh, yes.
I'm sorry. Ed, Todd, and I sit on the Judiciary Committee, the three of us together, and one thing we've challenged Mayor, the municipal court system, to do is to look at ways to operate more efficiently, to look at ways we can save money. And Chief Judge James and our Director of the Courts, LaShawn Thompson, and their staffs have done an incredible job at taking a look at this. One of the things they've done in the last few years is saved us like over $550,000 that we're paying to the jail. And they came up with a new program last year, which was to hire a community relations coordinator. And I'd like LaShawn to talk a little bit about that. She's here today. She's the Director of our courts, and it's going to be very brief, but the point of it is, the reason we want to do that, is we want to add to this budget an additional community relations coordinator, which is a big help over at the courthouse in operating not only efficiently but kindly and taking care of people that sometimes are very intimidated and scared of the system.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and counsel. LaShawn Thompson, Director of Municipal Courts. As we previously discussed, this position is As we previously discussed, this position is responsible for serving as a liaison in our court. This individual is housed on the first floor of our building. When our court patrons come in and out of the building, they're able to visit with someone in regards to their case. And the liaison is responsible for assisting them with making informed decisions about their case, breaking down the barriers when they come out of court. If they don't understand what actually happened in their case, they're able to visit with someone outside of the building. The liaison is also responsible for any other agencies, whether or not someone is in a penal institution, or they're in district court. They have a direct contact to the community service, I mean, the community relations coordinator. They're able to resolve cases. Often, people are at a stopping point when they're incarcerated. They're not able to go to a lower level of care. So the community relations coordinator is responsible for coordinating those efforts with the municipal councillor's office also as well. That position does community outreach in our community, breaking down those barriers so people can come in and resolve their cases that they have with municipal court. Also, you know, not putting the burden on that jail contract also as well, so helping people make informed decisions about their cases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, LaShawn. Mr. Couch, is this is what she's describing included in the proposed budget that you've distributed?
It is not.
Okay.
And that's why at this time, I would like to make a motion to add this position to the budget. We have the numbers breakdown for everybody.
So where would the funding come from for that? Councilman? I'll get to your question in a minute. I know what you're...
So we do have contingency in the general fund. Our contingency level is about 1.65% is what we've got in the general fund of our total general fund budget. Our goal is to have that at 2%, so we're below our expected level, but we could reduce that contingency to fund this position if we needed to.
So that would be the most likely. If it were the will of the council to pursue this position, that's probably how you would advise funding it, Mr. Couch?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. One is, my understanding is that the community relations officer that we have now helps with language barrier?
That is correct, Councilman.
Okay. Would you anticipate the second one to do so as well?
We would go out and look for the most qualified applicant, maybe as a preference.
I don't know if we've really thought all the way through that yet, but that would be obviously desirable.
Okay. I mean, it seems, is it a fair contention that if you help people with a language barrier, if you help them be comfortable in the system, they're less likely to leave, you're more able to work out payment plans, or keep them in the system and actually get them to pay their fines? So there could be some offset of the cost by increasing, I mean, not by increasing revenue... I mean, it's not about revenue generation, it's about customer service, but a consequence is going to be, I would think, if you eliminate the language barrier, number one, that you're going to increase participation in the system.
I mean, I've heard this example several times where people show up at the system. They are intimidated, they are scared, they are afraid they're going to be arrested, and just walk away. And what's that, what's the effect on us by them walking away? Well, a bench warrant is issued, and the next time they get pulled over, then they're arrested, and then we're paying the county jail to incarcerate that person. And so we want the system to operate efficiently, and we want to be kind and help people once they get there and work their way through the system.
I agree.
Okay. So when Councilman Stenssifer made his motion, I immediately sensed a tensing up of our city clerk over here, and I'm guessing that is because such a vote could not occur without having been placed on the agenda. Is that correct, Francis?
Correct. The Open Meetings Act would preclude you from doing that. The appropriate time may be to have an amendment on the agenda on June 5th.
On June 5th.
When the budget's considered.
Would that be a...
That would be totally acceptable.
Would you consider withdrawing your motion today?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion at this time.
With the understanding that we'll put on an amendment option to the introduced budget next Tuesday.
Perfect. Thank you very, very much.
Okay. Any other comments on that topic or anything else relating to the budget proposal? And we also have Item B under our Finance Committee agenda, which is opportunity for public comment. No one has signed up. I see no one rushing to the microphone, so we will adjourn the Finance Committee and reconvene the council meeting. And we do have one item for consideration here under 4A. Enter into executive session on the advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding potential claims or litigation by the City of Oklahoma City in response to the opioid epidemic, et cetera. To enter into executive session, we would require a motion and a vote.
Move this item into executive session.
Got a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that at the end of the other business. We now have items from council. Councilman Greiner.
Just for clarification, next Tuesday, we vote on the final budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
It is, of course, our prerogative not to do so as well, but that is the plan. We have till the end of June before a crisis erupts.
Okay. Well, you know...
No, we don't. We could go one more week is all we go to meet St. Louis. You've got to adopt it 15 days before...
You have to apply hearing 15 days, seven days before.
Yeah. Got it. Okay.
All right.
All right. That concludes Item 5, City Manager Reports. Jim?
Nothing this morning, sir.
And Item 7, Citizens to be Heard. We had no one sign up. Are there any citizens who wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will now proceed back to Item 4A, Enter into Executive Session, and we will be back.